I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Is there anyone here for public input? Anyone for public input? Anyone? All right. Review and approve council agenda.
Move to approve as presented.
I'll second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, passed unanimously. Consent agenda items. Item A, approve election judge list for 2024 primary election. Item B, approve Friends Bar 2:00 AM liquor license renewal. And item C, approve resolution accepting donations to the city.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, passed unanimously. Regular agenda. Item A, proposed updates to rural tax policy. John?
Mayor Miller, council members, folks in the audience. This is a proposed update to a previous rural tax policy that was adopted last in 2016. Just a little bit of overview. Properties that were previously annexed in the city typically or generally have a lower rural tax, which is usually held by that property and only changed to the higher, what we call urban tax rate. That's applied elsewhere in the remainder of the city. Either when one of two things would happen, when they're platted or subdivided. Plating or a plating is also required before you can do a building permit for an unplanted property. Or when they have city or water sewer infrastructure brought out to them. Just a little history here. In early 2024, city staff was approached by a rural property owner representing a couple of folks in the outlying area with an interest in updating the policy to allow additional flexibility, to allow for some level of development, while still allowing the existing owners to retain their lower tax status. The draft policy was created with their input and over a couple sessions of work session with the city council. While the updated policy would apply most directly to owners of larger tracts of land where subdivision of property or development would be feasible, typically those larger parcels. We did take the opportunity to send notice to all properties in the areas where the lower rural tax rates are commonly in place. The inventory we received from Stearns County, this would apply to several hundred properties, some of which are basically smaller residential properties where it applies, but it's not really going to change much because they're not going to be in a position to ever subdivide or develop further than what they are. But realistically, the impacts of those updated policy would apply more for larger parcels where they could see growth or development or subdivision in the future. As a policy, it's not required that we would have a public hearing with this, but after city council work session review, staff was directed by the city council to include a public hearing component and send the notice to those folks in the areas that would be impacted by this and include the proposed updates. We did send that a couple of weeks back, and as of today, I had one call with just a brief question on it, but that's all I had as far as comments or anything as of today. The proposed amended rural tax policy would replace and supersede the previous policy adopted in 2016 and includes an inventory of specific property, properties that it applies to. That inventory is included in the packet. I was still working on at the time of publication, but it's been since updated for that. Again, there's several hundred applicable properties. There are a number in the inventory that are referenced by parcel ID but don't include an acreage. Those are mostly properties within Belclaire because the entirety of Belclaire is included. And this inventory is one of those tax districts, and every unit in Belclaire is included the way that works. That list has been compiled, including the current ownership and for parcels where an acreage is able to be determined, that's included. But every parcel attached on that list is included by parcel ID and current owner. I would suggest adoption of the updated policy, which would replace and supersede the earlier 2016 policy. What this policy does is allow for up to 50% of what we are calling an originating property or an origin property from the time of adoption, which would potentially be tonight. An owner could develop or sell or parcel off up to 50% of that without incurring the rural, excuse me, the urban tax rate on the remainder property. Right now, if someone was to sell even a sliver of their property, it's not platted. It's on the existing rural tax rate. Right now, under our policy as written, that would trigger the urban tax rate for everything, both the seller and the buyer. This would split the difference on that and allow folks to sell some level of their land and then still stay on that urban tax, excuse me, the rural tax rate for the remainder part. Doesn't preclude anyone from getting on the city-urban tax rate at some point. That's the end goal, is to have everyone on that tax rate. But gives a little breathing room for owners to potentially sell or do something with some of their properties and stay on that rural tax rate for a longer time for themselves. This is a public hearing, so folks can feel free to come up and comment at council's discretion, but I'd recommend approval of that updated tax policy with the attachments as far as the parcel ID inventory and the mapping of the existing parcel configurations.
John, just for some clarity to this 50%, I'm going to use 100 acres. Someone wants to buy 20 acres. That gets divided off, which leaves 80 acres. The 20 acres goes to the new tax rate. Couple of years down the road, someone wants to buy another 20, which is still less than 50% of the 80. Then that 20 would go off, leaving 60 acres, which would remain at
Correct.
At that rate.
Yep.
So, just so there's, that's the clarity of the whole thing.
Yep.
We're not penalizing it when things sell and get divided off as long as it's no more than 50%.
Yeah, it's from the date of adoption and from the existing configuration as it would be today. That parcel ID that's tied with this, that acreage. It doesn't keep splitting in half. It's not like someone brings a cake to your break room and it keeps cutting in half and half and half and half. No, it starts. Here's the half that gets broken off. This half, as long as nothing else happens with that, that's fine. That's probably the easiest way I can equate it. At some point, every property over a long enough time period would be converted onto the city tax rate, the urban tax rate.
Is there anyone here that wants to speak to that? I mean, is anybody opposed to it? Okay, I need you to come to the microphone, to the podium, and give us your name and address, please.
Colleen Donovan, 324 970 North St. Cloud. We have property on County Road 138 on both sides of the road. So, if you have three owners on that property and the other two buy the other one out, are you considering that still the rural tax?
Just a simple sale doesn't change anything. Sale or transfer a property doesn't change. It's only when there's an action, a plating or a subdivision, or in the eventuality that city services become available. As long as nothing changes with the property, it can be bought and sold or transferred without triggering anything.
Okay. So, say you get three owners and they all sell, I sell it to you, it would still remain rural?
Correct.
If you don't change anything.
Selling the whole part.
Yeah.
If you're subdividing out, you know, a portion of that and keeping a portion of it, that's when that division that he was referring to, if it's more than 50%, is when it would be triggered.
And that's the same way it is today. There's no desire, I don't think we could even.
It would be triggered on both 50%.
I'm sorry?
It would be triggered then on both 50% or just the 50% that was sold?
It would, if you were to sell 50% of the property, then the 50% that's sold to whoever it is, that becomes the the one that's brought onto the urban tax rate. The remainder, the part that's retained by the current owner or the originating owner, the seller, that remains on the rural tax rate.
Okay. Do you have a list of the parcel IDs that you're referring to in this area or?
We do. I don't know, it should be in the packet now.
It is.
Yeah, it's several pages.
Yeah, it's pretty long.
Because I just received my letter today on this meeting tonight. So, and there wasn't anything in there on the parcel IDs.
No, it was sent to pretty much everyone in the areas that it would apply to. I believe you're, I remember the name as being in the parcel list here.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else got any questions?
Bob Zabinski, County Road 6, Wake Park. Just a point of clarification. Front page, fourth paragraph, last sentence. "Realistically, the impact of the updated policy on smaller residential properties would be negligible." Can you explain that?
I'm not sure what's there to explain. They can't really very much be subdivided or grow any further than they already can. The only thing that's really going to trigger anything for a smaller residential property is if and when they're platted for any reason to do a building permit or when utilities are brought through.
But I mean, if it's a small residential lot of less than 10 acres, it couldn't be subdivided.
That's part of what he's saying. That's exactly what he's saying.
Why would it be negligible then?
Meaning that it's not going to really have a lot of, this policy's not really going to be impacted by those into smaller.
I took it as being significant change to that.
No, no, no.
Okay.
No, what I'm looking at, Bob, is the homes that are in the area that are on half-acre lots or the parcels in Belclaire where you're not going to take a lot that's somewhere out on Granite View that's a half acre and split that again. It's just not likely to happen.
I'm not sure why those people in Belclaire got notices.
Because they're still underneath the same policy. We had to, everybody had to be, because at some point, they might have a small parcel today. But what happens if they bought a parcel that was right next to it or something that was, that made it larger and they bought some adjacent property and put them all together?
It applies to everybody, everybody on the rural tax rate regardless of the size of your parcel. So, we do, there's a handful of properties in here that are smack in the middle of town. So, it applies to those too. It's just, it applies to everybody that's on that lower rural tax rate. I'm sorry?
There's some in town that are in rural.
There's a handful, yep. Yep, they're on the edges.
Any other questions?
Lee Zabinski, 3190, County Road 137. First of all, John, thanks for taking, having to put there, thanks for putting the time into this. I think it was some clarification that was needed. You said the, well, Bob addressed the negligible thing. Do you know what the, to put you on the spot, what the rural tax rate is compared to the residential tax rate? What those percentages are?
I don't have that at hand here, I'm sorry.
Okay. I guess my. So, that's my understanding historically is about double. The urban rate is about double what the rural rate is. It sounds like that's still pretty much, pretty close, ballpark. So, it's approximately double. The spirit of the policy or the intention of the policy is basically the way I understand it, and it's somewhat stated here to reflect that when the burden on the city increases, the tax rates increase accordingly. And I think that makes perfect sense. It should. If the city is going to invest more money in an area, they should be, there should be a higher tax value to offset that. My concern is, we're going to, the way the policy is down, the way it'll continue to be, there's going to be an urban tax rate applied to properties with no change at all to the burden on the city. And I'm wondering how this city is justifying doubling the tax rate with no change at all in the services that are provided. In addition to not increasing the services that are provided, there's no plan whatsoever to provide the services anytime in the future, in the next 30 years. So, I'm wondering how is the council or how is the city justifying doubling a tax rate with no long-term plan to provide any services? I've been on the full urban tax rate for 23 years, and I'm wondering, do I just pay off another 40 with no expectations of any services being available? I'm paying twice the rate as my neighbors across the street that arguably are putting the same burden on the Cityway Park as I am, and there's no long-range plan to change anything. The rates, and I'm not here to gripe about my situation. I'm concerned about everybody else who's going to fall into this in the future. There's no intention to provide the services you're charging for. So, how do you justify charging for those services? Can there be somewhere in between this full urban rate, which is double the rural rate, and the rural rate? Can there be a compromise somewhere in between? I realize the city needs the tax revenue. I understand that. But if the city's not providing the service, there's no additional burden. So, where is the justification for the doubling the rate?
Well, some of what you're referring to is that when you're subdividing property out, the trigger to that is that there is going to be some type of development that's going to go along with it. That's the reason why that's being subdivided. That's the reason why. So, once you start subdividing that, you're developing it into something that is going to create a need for service. Whether it's utilities that you're receiving, you're still receiving other services, there's going to be an additional amount of individuals that are going to be on that land and on that particular property, different than what it is today if it stays in that rural setting. And I think this city has done a good job of trying to prioritize and allow people to, as long as things stay rural, that, you know, that we've allowed them to stay and stay on that rural tax rate. That's not always the case in cities. A lot of times what ends up happening is that once it's annexed in, you just move to that urban rate. I will tell you, it's a lot of work to try to keep up because we have several annexations that have occurred. And there's several different rural tax rates at different rates depending upon when they've come in. And so, trying to keep track of all of that and what you're suggesting would make that very complicated. What we've tried to do is listen to property owners and recognize that today you have some situations where some people want to sell off a portion of their land but remain on their other parcel of that. So, this policies are really allowing some of those things. It might not get to exactly everything that you have, and everybody could argue in different parts of this community about how much of the services they get or what they don't get. But the reality of it is, is that we are really trying to address some of those concerns and issues with that. And I think that's really the point of where we're trying to get to with this policy is allowing some of those that want to remain in their parcel but yet still sell off a portion of it, giving them that opportunity to do that up to 50%. In today's world, the policy, if you split your property like that, both of those properties, then that subdivision are going to go to that urban rate. So, there's not one magic thing that I, you know, that we can say that everything on that. But the intention of that is long-range plans. Does the city have plans to try to provide services? Yes. We would love to be able to provide services everywhere, but that comes at a cost. And property owners in those particular areas, just like throughout the rest of this community, have all paid for those utilities as well. Your utilities are an enterprise, and so those individuals have paid for a portion of some of those things. And so, that is, that's kind of how it's worked in the past. So, is it a perfect solution? No, but does this recognize some of the concerns that some have wanted in that area? Yes.
I agree that, you know, that this is a good change. This is, I think this is a good change all around for the city and for the rural tax, rural property owners. But it still comes back to the city has no plan to provide services you're billing for. I get it, that, you know, the idea is that when a property gets platted out and subdivided and hoses get built, that there's going to be additional demands up for city services. There's no sidewalks, there's no streetlights, there's no fire hydrants, there's nothing. We live on a county road. The county incurs 100% of the cost associated with the road. So, how are we justifying doubling the tax rate? When the burden increases, the tax rate should go up. Until then, why is it going up? I understand a lot of situations.
We could get rid of all the rural tax rate and simplify our tax system. Our tax system in Cityway Park is very complicated for allowing this. So, we could change it to simplify it, but you wouldn't like that. So, even from when you look at a city's, the way a city develops, I always was told it had to be contiguous. So, to let these things go is not always a good planning strategy, at least to me. Because now, as the city grows, we've allowed these things to happen in these rural areas. So, changing or adding another layer to the tax code plus allowing rural development like this, it's got its problems.
So, you're saying you're okay with charging the residents double because it complicates things for managing the system?
But it does put a burden on the city. It adds people out there. It adds more traffic to our roads. It adds more people in our parks. It doesn't just make it look like you didn't get sewer and water. If you had 100 acres and you sold off 20 acres of it, somebody moved into there. Something moved in there. Some business, some family or a group of families or whatever. So, they do put, the burden's not the right name. They put a demand on the city of services. Whether that's sewer and water, it may be, it may not be.
Or fire or whatever.
But it is for other stuff.
Yep.
Right. Well, I think, I think.
I mean, and I think the biggest part is the utilities. One, you're talking about not having any long-range plan. That's not true. There is long-range planning.
So, what year is this scheduled to get the County Road 6?
It all is going to be dependent upon the development in those areas. That's all going to be driven by the individuals in that area. And that's kind of the beauty of it, to be honest with you, because some individuals like their rural areas, others don't. Others want to be able to develop it. This is kind of giving you a little bit of both worlds to be able to do some of that. We've made a lot of accommodations to allow people. If you want to leave your property as is and be able to keep it rural like that, you have that ability to do that, and we've allowed you to have that rural rate. Now, if you want to choose to develop it, that's really at the hands of some of you that want to choose to do those things. Those costs of those utilities are going to be borne by those that choose to develop it. That's the way this community has always been. And that's, and the utilities are just, are an enterprise. So, those are paid for by the individuals that are using it. Those are not all the services that are given by everything else, and a lot of that that's put on by our property taxes. The property taxes that you guys are paying for throughout the city and all of the other residents are for a lot of the other services that we provide to the residents. So, it's not just based off of that. And so, those are paid for under an enterprise fund, which is a completely separate fund than what we're talking about here when it's referring to the urban and rural tax rate. There's not a perfect system. I can't look at a particular piece of property or somebody else and say, well, you're affected, you know, and this is what, you're going to get your percentage. There's different, there are different properties that do that, you know, and have different impacts. It's kind of, it's difficult to be able to get it to that point. But I think this is our best effort to be able to try to give some accommodation that wasn't there in the past. And I will tell you that I don't think that this is a very common practice in most cities, even in this area.
Yep. Once you trigger a plating, it all changes. That's the standard in most cities, yes.
My concern is more from the angle of the person buying the smaller parcel that's now paying the higher rate than it is from the person splitting up the larger tract.
Should we change it, not do this, and it all changes?
I think that's for the buyer to worry about. They know coming in that they're going to pay a higher rate. That's up to them to decide whether they want to pursue it.
Yeah, they're making that decision.
They know that when they buy that land.
Well, for the record, I think it's, I think it's a disservice to taxpayers to charge the rate without providing the service.
Great, thanks.
Their services being provided.
Anybody else? All right, council, your wishes on this?
No, I don't know if we should pass it.
Well, one person doesn't make it.
Give me two of them.
Well, you know, it's a good deal. We're doing the best we can to help.
We are.
We're doing the best we can to help.
Everything humanly possible.
The people that were brought into the city. We're trying to be as fair as possible. I mean, you know, when you pass even something else, someone might be left behind or everybody's got different opinions, so.
I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the new tax rate. Our tax policy for the rural and.
I'll second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, passes unanimously. All right. Item B, request of Leroy Ludwig doing business as Nature's View Landscaping and Robert W. Zabinski, 2003 revocable trust for CUP to allow for a landscaping business in the A1 agriculture rural residential district and for review of preliminary and final plat of Zabinski Acres Plat 2, vicinity 2705 County Road 6.
Mayor Miller, council members, folks in the audience. You may recall, a few of you, this request was previously reviewed in part in June of 2021 and ultimately approved by the city council for the business component, the conditional use permit for the landscaping business for Nature's View Landscaping Leroy Ludwig to purchase approximately 20 acres that would be split from the Zabinski property on County Road 6. The project didn't move forward at that time, and due to the time that passed, it now needs to be reviewed again. The applicant is proposing to develop both a home and their landscaping business on the property at hand. That would be referenced in Zabinski Acres Plat 2 that's included in the packet, that of just under 20 acres. Development of the home on that property would not require specific approval, provided it would be platted, but the landscape business component does, and that's what triggers the conditional use permit, which is a allowable component in the Ag A1 district. This property was developed as a quote-unquote "shouse" post-frame construction residential storage-type building. The applicant has previously coordinated with their architect, builder, and the city building official on anticipated plans for the property to ensure building code compliance. No building permit could be issued for the property until both the plating of the property occur and the conditional use permit is approved. The general layout is much the same as previous. Any changes are very nominal. This business was actually located in town for a number of years at the southwest corner of the town just off of, just viewable off of Old County Road 6. Business functions essentially the same as they did there. And we didn't have any problems or concerns for at least as long as I've been here and as long as it was there. They would operate five days a week in the summer, no holidays or weekends, with summer hours typically 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Winter hours typically 12 hours after a snowfall to accommodate their plowing activities. The site plan they've submitted, they include the structure, the shelves with residential space for the applicant and family, office and storage space on the opposite end. Equipment, some limited equipment storage outside, including trucks and trailers and storage facilities for the decorative landscape rock and mulch and pile areas for brush, black dirt, and boulders. These are a sufficient distance from the roadway that I don't believe there would be a need for specific screening unless the applicant would so choose, as long as they stick to the plan at hand. The proposed driveway and parking areas are denoted as gravel. Typically, the city ordinance does require a conditional use permit would be a trigger to have its parking hard surfaced or brought to city standards. But again, due to the rural nature of the area and trying to make some, what I'd consider reasonable accommodations, others could potentially dispute that. I would advocate for this case that the property be allowed to go for gravel utilization and forego hard surfacing at this time, although that could be revisited in the future. The plating of the property is required to any commencement of a building permit or construction activity. This would separate the parcel of slightly less than 10, 20 acres of the northwest corner of the existing property for purchase by Nature's View Landscaping. That property does exceed the minimum criteria for the district, and the county has weighed in with their comments regarding conditions of approval with their front. And the, the county has weighed in with their comments regarding conditions of approval with the, their frontage along the county road. The park board reviewed the request and recommended that the required payment in lieu of parkland dedication for the property be assessed based on requirement for a single family dwelling in the amount of eight hundred and thirty-six dollars. Planning Commission did, did review at their June meeting. No concerns from the public were received. Planning Commission recommended approval for both items with Planning Commission member Bob Zabinski abstaining from discussion of vote due to the conflict of interest for this item. I'd recommend approval of the conditional use permit with the conditions of approval as outlined, as well as the approval of the resolution for preliminary final plat of Zabinski Acres Plat Two with those conditions as well. This, this one is not a public hearing that was held at the, at the Planning Commission.
Council, any questions for John?
No, I have none.
Is that oh-seven fifteen twenty-four or twenty-two?
What, resolution?
Twenty-four.
There's two numbers here.
Yeah, the twenty-four, it's the year. So if it says twenty-two, it's twenty, it's supposed to be twenty-four.
Did I, did I have an error? I apologize if I did.
Somebody want to move to approve the conditional use permit?
So move.
I'll second.
I was waiting to see a motion.
I can get that down for you. You already made it.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. And I need a motion to approve the preliminary and final plat of Zabinski Acres Plat Two.
I'll move.
Second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. All right, thank you. Item C, consider ordinance one oh eight, use of drones.
So, mayor, council members.
We've had some discussion over the last year about the need to put together an ordinance that pertains to drone usage within the community. This would pertain to particularly, I think, an issue came up at the, at the ledge and just wanting to make sure that we're, you know, having some control over what usages of those drones are allowed. And so the ordinance before you really just provides some of that direction and guidance on, on what can be used and who can be using them. It does give you the ability to take into consideration any, any public spaces that you want. It gives you the ability, and it doesn't have to be in the actual ordinance, to, to Sean's point when we were talking in the work session about allowing special areas within your public spaces for those that want to fly drones, that you would have that ability to do that. And so it does give us that flexibility to do, to do some of those things. And then also will allow us to have some control over, over the regulation of that, particularly for events similar to those that are held at the ledge throughout the community.
Yeah, one question.
I hope I have an answer for you. How was that?
Does the PD give the permits for use or does the city itself?
Hold on just a second, Mike. I've got to get back to the-
I don't know if I read it in here or not. I don't know if I did either.
I might have just, I might have to go back a second. Adri, do you recall whether or not permitting?
I don't think that was determined in the ordinance. I think that's more of a-
Staffing kinds of a thing.
That we'll have to determine when that time.
That's just an internal-
I would assume that likely what would end up happening would, that it would come into the admin side and that just like our other, or a, a lot of our other permits do. And then they're usually reviewed by our police chief or in the, in the police department for, for review and consideration.
And that, and that's correct. When we had talked about it before, it'd follow very much the same line as our parade permits and things like that where collectively both city hall and the police department will weigh in, make the approval and-
Just so there's a common path that when someone asks that we're going to get it?
It is, yeah. Yeah. This is just the ordinance that's just setting up how the regulations are going to be put. And then, then typically the, a lot of those kinds of things come to Adri from an application standpoint and then get reviewed that way so that she handles and hand, has all of the administrative sides to that. So all the paperwork, we can make sure that, you know, that the ordinance is being applied, you know, in the right way and stuff. So we'll be developing probably an application process and, and going about it from there.
If it, if it comes down to a drone flying at the ledge, then Meredith will be directly involved because some bands don't want that. And so that'll all get cleared well before too.
Well, just, I thought there would be a line in here that said a permit should be applied through blah, blah, blah. Just to make it easier and-
I don't think-
Most of our ordinance don't say that. Usually that's just a policy we develop internally and then when people start calling and asking, we direct them to which staff that they need to talk to fill that out.
Right.
All right, council, anything else?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
One oh eight and a summary publication.
Second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Is it Sean?
I seconded and then he seconded.
Who, what?
Take whoever you want.
I did it first, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. I don't think I have anything.
Um, just that next Monday, July twenty-second at four-thirty PM, we do have a scheduled special council meeting to consider a moratorium on cannabis cultivation. Oh, yeah, you need to approve bills.
Doesn't say that. Says adjourn.
It says, it just says council mayor, yeah, but I-
Uh-oh, we don't have it on the agenda.
It is right here.
Somebody want to move to approve the bills?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Move.
Got a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. Mr. Blumley, you got anything?
No, sir.
Bill?
I do have something for Bill. Hold on.
No, sir.
Hang on, I'm going to wait, go through these first. Chief?
Nope.
Chief? All right, Mike.
Bill, I know we talked about this a week or two ago. The restoration for this company, I'll use some nice words, is terrible. How are we going to get these lawns fixed? After they destroy someone's front yard by leaving a big six-by-six pile of dirt with nothing growing? I think it should have been sodded to these people. And anybody that has a lawn growing, they should be sodded back rather than seeding.
I don't know if that's a city responsibility. If that's a public right-of-way, that's really, that's really-
Mike, I can tell you that I think we have a very limited scope of what we have the ability to do within that. But what I can do is I can reach out to Brian Grogan, who is the attorney that we work with on all of the right-of-way stuff to see if there's anything further that we can do when we're not satisfied. That's probably the best that we can do because I don't know what we have from an authority standpoint. Because we worked with Brian when, when this came in to make sure that we could put anything and everything in place. And I see, Bill, I took your thunder.
I'm sorry.
Well, I know what the address is, or I mean, the answer that you always get. Well, you just put seed on it and by next year it'll be green. Well, you know what? It isn't happening.
That's, to me, that's, that's, that's a contractor's responsibility.
It is. We have a bond for them to restore to. We have a policy that they need to restore to. They do not get another permit. All permits have been closed now for them to move any further until they get the restoration in place. That's exactly where it's at. So until they get the restoration in place to close a permit, they're not getting another one. And they know that. And there's a standard that's out there.
Restoration, though, there's, I mean-
There, there is a standard of restoration that we are following with all of our street projects whenever we do a street project. It's the same policy that MNDOT uses and the city uses. That's their policy. And it's being inspected and they have to meet to that before it gets released. Yes, can it take a little bit of time? Sure. Were they lax in their restoration on those first ones? Absolutely. But everything is stopped in its tracks right now. They're not doing anything out there anymore until they can get this straightened out. So we are watching it. Dale's watching it every day. Bad thing is, he's on vacation this week. They know that. He's coming back Monday. He'll be out there again. So we're watching it and holding their feet to the fire.
I'm asking it on behalf of-
I-
But that's not the city's responsibility. That's a contract.
Sean, Sean's out there. He knows.
Yep.
Terrible. The seed they put in there, the black dirt of a half inch, isn't doing nothing.
They, they know that, yep. Being corrected.
Are they going to come back and put in four inches with some good seed?
I don't know if it's exactly four inches or whatever it is, but it's more than a half an inch, yes. So. It's being watched. And it's, like I said, it ain't going any further. They're not getting another permit. And if they don't meet it, then-
I'm not complaining on my behalf.
No, and if they don't meet it, then we'll hire-
Bring it up again.
We'll hire a contractor and we'll do it ourselves and they'll take the money out of the bond. We still have that, yes. Is it immediately? Yep, you tear out the grass and is it going to be green again tomorrow? No, sorry. And there's nothing we can do about that.
No, but it's been two or three weeks and there should be some green stuff coming up.
Couldn't mention it now.
Which is, like I said, we're, we're still monitoring it.
Anything else, council? Shawna, did you have anything?
No, that, that was it.
All right, if nothing else, we are adjourned at seven-ten.